Seven oh two. Seven oh two, call the meeting to order. Uh, we'll start off with the pledge of allegiance. Any changes, corrections to the agenda? Going once, going twice? All right. I move to approve the agenda. Can I have a second? Second by Commissioner Tio Flack. Any discussion? Don't see any. All those in favor of the agenda as it stands, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries unanimously. Uh. Approval of the meeting minutes. Is there any corrections? No corrections, all right. Commissioner Lawrence, you had your hand up. Was that to move to, uh? All right, so Commissioner Lawrence moves to accept the meeting minutes for both December second as well as December sixth. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Tia Flack, help. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Public comment, we have three minutes dedicated to the public if they have any comments. And looks like we only have one attendee. If you wish to make a comment, please raise your hand and we can elevate you so you can speak. All right. Unfinished business. Mount Lake Terrace annexation update from Chief Hobus.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. I want to turn this over to Assistant Chief Eastman here. Thank you.
Um, so real quick, brief update on where we are. Um, we've been working with, um. With the city of Mount Lake Terrace staff. Um, city of Mount Lake Terrace staff, so, um. Late last week, or I guess at the beginning of last week, we sent the, um. The pre-annex or the RFA amended plan, um, that allows Mount Lake Terrace to the RFA. Um, we also sent the pre-annexation agreement, um, and then Rich was able to, um, draft, um. An agreement for Station nineteen, um, a little bit different than we've done in the, than we've historically have done based on the fact that the property is one. For the whole complex is one, um, and so that becomes a little bit problematic. Um, Rich is recommending that we do a perpetual lease. Um. That allows us the sole exclusive use of what we need to use for the fire station. Um, it, um. Um, allows law enforcement and their IT to continue to use the spaces that they're using that we don't use. Um, it makes it clean that anything they did to do to maintain their part of that building, they maintain, um, and, um. There's another piece of that where the city, um. Has a generator that comes on that powers partial, partial, um. Station nineteen and partial of their law enforcement building. Um, and they have had conversations, um, up, up until the pandemic to put a generator there that would actually. Fully. Make it so everything worked in the station with power. If the power went off, the generator kick on and would power the whole station. Um, and so they had a conversation with us about, um, as part of the, um, pre-annexation agreement. Um, if we were willing to split the cost of that generator, um. Um. And they, um, kind of was, was referred to me to yesterday or today talking to. Um, their assistant city managers, they've got ARPA funds, so it wouldn't be something that would be at some point in time in the future. Um, they would put a generator there that would generate not just the fire station, but would generate their law enforcement building, um, a hundred percent. Um, we estimate they, they're saying about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars total. Um, and I'm going to estimate it's probably a little bit more than that by the time you get all done, um, and, um. The, the currently where we sit with that is a fifty fifty split between the RFA, um, and the city to make that happen. Um, which is a nuance that we haven't had before, um, and I wanted to bring that to the board's attention. Um, they now, um, I talked to Stefan on Friday, I talked to Stefan again this morning. He's been going through the pre-annexation agreement, the restated ILA, um, and the, um. I'm going to call it the long-term perpetual lease, for lack of a better term, um, and reviewing those. Um, and they, they have things like their current attorney, um, prefers litigation versus arbitration. He's got both, um. The city of Breyer's pre-annexation agreement, the city of, um, Mill Creek's pre-annexation agreement, they're both different. One says litigation, one says. Um, annexation, I think we need the ability, um, to resolve dispute. Um, and I also said our expectation is the RFA is going to pass and the pre-annexation agreement, i.e. The amended ILA will never take effect, so, um, the timeline. Um. They need to have the resolution put on the ballot done, approved by their council on the twenty first of February. So rolling things backwards, um, I had previously thought that we'd bring before the board at the next meeting, so next Tuesday. Um, the final drafts, um, for the board to consider for action. Um, both the pre-annexation agreement and the RFA amended plan. Um, and it sounds like the city is going to need more time to continue to work through what they have to do with it. Where I probably won't be able to get it in the packet for next Tuesday, um. Um. I would hope that Chair, you would consider making the work session a special meeting. Um, in February and the intent would be based on the timeline to have, um. Those final drafts ready to become before the board, um, for ratification on our work session. So the second Tuesday of February, um, and then with the city of, of Mount Lake Terrace's timeline. Is, um, no later than the sixteenth of February. Um, they would approve by resolution the RFA amended plan. And then the pre-annexation agreement, which includes, um. The pre-annexation agreement includes, um, the, um, restated and amended, um, interlocal agreement contract for service. Um, and then they would do the rest of their work, um, on the twenty first to take it to ballot, um, and so. As we all know, it's compressed, um, and that's the update, um, with Mount Lake Terrace to date. Um, if for some reason, um, we get to a place where things move faster than I think. They're currently on target to move, um, and we can get them in the packet on Friday and get them before you for the next meeting. We will make sure that happens. Um, and give you as much time to review those, um, as we can. Um, and if we get to a place where it's not. Um, I don't make that timeline, but we have them early in the week. We'll make sure we can get those out to you to review. Prior to going in the packet to give you as much time to review and ask questions of those documents and if. For some reason, we find something or miss something, it gives us an opportunity to go back to the city prior to bringing you back to the board for action, um. On that work session. So with that, I'll pause and take any questions from the board.
Anybody have any questions?
I have one.
Go ahead. Yep.
Chief Eastman, thank you for a detailed, uh, explanation of things to come. I just wanted to reemphasize the point that we're not taking the entire hundred percent. Cost of the generator, even though we'll assume the facility that the city is willing to. Meet us halfway at a fifty fifty cost share, is that correct?
That is correct.
That's amazing. So thank you for that. Really do appreciate that and wherever it stemmed from, thank you for being the bearer of good news.
I, I have, I have to give credit where credit is due. This is a conversation that the city had with us. The city. Wanted to do this work. It was part of their planning all along, um, and, um. So I can't take credit for the. Idea, um, but as far as having the rest of the conversation, we had a good team working on it.
I have two questions for you. One, so with that generator, what's your timeline for that in the next five years?
Oh, they have our money, so they have to use it by the end of twenty twenty four, I believe. See there. It would be, right now, it, talking to, obviously, this is going to take council approval, right? But, but from, um. My understanding, talking to the assistant city manager, they're talking about using ARPA funds. Just for ARPA funds, ARPA funds is the. American Recovery.
Something other act.
It, it's money that's. Part of the COVID pandemic and the city has, the cities have lots of latitude to use that. And, um, their staff has recommended that they use ARPA funds. Um, for the generator and they have timelines to use that, so it's not a five-year thing. Um, I would say it's probably not going to happen. You know, if, if this all happens and we become, they become part of the RFA, it's probably not going to be months, but it'll probably be. Months and it'll be done. I, I don't see it being delayed very long.
Okay, and then, uh, we have fifteen stations and of those fifteen, which one do currently today have backup power?
So I'm going to look at Chief Isatila. I think they all have. They all have generators.
Okay.
Um, I will say that I do not believe we have a single fire station. That has a generator that powers the whole station. I think it powers enough circuits for them to operate out of that station. But it doesn't, in other words, it keeps refrigerators on, keeps this, this assembly of lights on, it keeps the alarm system on, the notification and the garage doors. And that's probably it. Um, so we don't have any fire stations that have the generator we're talking about, which powers the whole station.
Is, with regards to the capital facilities plan that, um. That was drafted some years ago here for the Fire District One RFA. Does that include, uh, generators to power the whole station or not at this time?
I've got to go look and, and I meant to do that and ran out of time today to see. My guess is, is probably. Based on what we historically have done, it's probably not the whole station. Um, I know we talked about a bigger generator for this building, which is one to generate. Power for this whole facility, which is part of the facilities plan, along with the work that, you know, Chief Isatila and the rest of the facilities team have done. Um, but I think most of the generators that we have keeps essential parts of the station. Power to maintain operations, but probably not, um, the full station. Powered like it would be without, and I think that's something, um. We've talked about, but I think it's a different kind of conversation. Because in theory, they should probably have more power capability than they currently do. A lot of those are generators that could generate your house. Um, and, you know, this last stint, we were without a power in some places for five or six days, even if we are. You know, call PUD and get on the shortlist and all those other pieces. Um, we experienced this last time. We had stations that were without power for two or three days. Um, and that's not an unrealistic thing that we should plan for as a result of some of the storms we've had that had a hundred. You know, a hundred and eighty thousand or two hundred thousand of the residences, so much gone without power, um, you know. Vulnerable population groups should get power before us and we should be able to have this set up. Or we can maintain operations and a strong operational readiness. In those kind of circumstances. So I think that's something staff's going to look at. Um, and my assumption will be a conversation as we continue to have implementation of facility plan conversations.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Kenny, I understand that, uh. You are very familiar with the capital facilities plan, is that correct?
Yeah.
Is this a detail that you might recall with regards to generators?
I don't think there were going to be generators in the, in the fire stations, but I, I could be wrong.
Okay, no, I've had a lot of people tell me that Commissioner Kenny knows a lot about the, the capital facilities plan. Kind of a resident expert as far as the commissioners go, so that's why I was asking you.
Chief Eastman would know more than I, so if he can't answer that question, I.
I haven't.
Fail in comparison.
I've gotten a copy of it. I just haven't had a chance to go through it and read it myself, so.
Yeah, you'd have to go. It probably wouldn't be in the facilities plan document itself. You'd have to go in to look at the itemized things.
Okay.
So I will tell you that the new fire stations, um, have generators as part of them. I, I would venture to say though that they're not. They're not the same caliber generator we're talking about with Station nineteen. They're enough to keep the doors open and keep functional.
Essential functions.
But, but I think that's something based on this last. Storm we had and, and some of the other storms that we probably would as an organization look at that reconsider. Um, and, and, and come up with the justification to do that, um, to justify the expenditure dollars and the maintenance associated with them.
And that's the basis of my question is this last storm and the impacts, so. I was just curious, given the, the information that you provided, I was like, hey, what if we were just to, uh, do this for others too, so. All right, thank you.
I can clarify, but so ARPA money has to be. Specified to be used by the end of twenty twenty four and spent by the end of twenty twenty six. So that's why it's not a five-year plan, but they might decide. To do it in twenty twenty five and that'd be fine. So in terms of capital planning for this organization, it'd be between now and. The end of twenty twenty six, it would hit your budget for that money. And you probably could argue with them about whether they did it one year or another, but they probably are, I'm guessing they want to do it sooner rather than later.
I, I think, I mean, because that, because that generator does both, it do both fire station, it do their, it do public safety in, in Mount Lake Terrace and not only do the fire station, but do the. The police station too. And so, um, I got, I got the distinct feeling from Stefan that they weren't going to let the grass grow. Um, and make it happen, so, um, and, and to be honest, I thought it was. I, I mean, we've talked about it a lot, but I thought it was. For me, it was a pretty easy. Of course, we'll share the, share it to make sure that we had that kind of operating, operational readiness when bad things happen.
So if they decide to move forward this calendar year, we've already approved our budget, what does that do?
So if, if. This will be in the pre-annexation agreement, so it'll be specified that we will share that cost. So when we approve, when the board approves the pre-annexation agreement. You've, you basically have agreed that you're going to share the cost of the generator with the city of Mount Lake Terrace. Um, and then I, my assumption would be. Is that at some point in time when we get to the point where we need to expend dollars, I don't think we would do it. Before then in twenty twenty three, if it happens in twenty twenty three, um, we put a budget, a budget amendment forward. To authorize those and, and CFO Bothwell would do that. If it's something that we know and can pre-plan for, that they're not going to do it like. Um, Leson Todd said in twenty twenty four or twenty twenty five, we would incorporate that. Into the capital component of the budget, um, and it would be part of our normal budget conversations. Um, and it would be clearly identified that we're doing this for this reason, um, and if it happens like that, you'd approve that expenditure in the normal budget process.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? All right.
Thank you.
To the Washington State Fire Commissioners Association Legislative Day. I believe that is what, Feb- Friday, February seventeenth with Executive Assistant Melissa Blankenship.
As you may have seen, uh, in the email that I recently sent, I'm requesting, uh, attendance numbers so that I can sign everyone up. And it would be really helpful to know as soon as possible if everybody. Could let me know who's coming. And the other, um, item is that there is a, uh. Tour or two tours actually that I'm planning to set up. And one is a, help me out, Commissioner Fernhoff, joint.
Um, one would be the FEMA joint field office.
Field office that's in Olympia.
Right.
And the other is.
It's called the State Emergency Operations Center or S E O C. It's at Camp Murray.
Um, on the way to our, to our visit. So the Camp Murray. Um, tour is already set for the day prior. I have a ten, I have everything pretty much tentatively set up. And the joint field operations center tour can be set up for either day. And. I'm requesting, um, a, either a short discussion or confirmation as to whether the. Commissioners and staff would like to head down a day early to the, uh, fire commissioners or the, um. Yes, the Fire Commissioners Association Day, um, Legislative Day, so that we can go to that tour. And not have to leave, um, as early as we have in the past and rush down. Uh, dealing with lots of traffic and it's a very, very, very long day, so, um. At the board's pleasure. Thank you.
So if we left on Thursday to attend those two items, what time do you think we leave here?
The tour. That I have set up, the first one that I have set up is for two. For about an hour and a half or so, so we could leave late more, ear- early afternoon. I mean, you know, noonish. Probably.
Is that the state first?
Yes, it would be the state first unless we planned, unless. Well, I can't say for sure. Yes, it would be the state first right now. I don't have actual. Uh, confirmed times for the joint field office tour. I didn't want to, uh, pin anything down or even pencil anything in other than just giving them the two dates until I knew for sure. What the board would like to do. As far as going a day early or not.
So are they can travel time from here in South, there, down there is about two hours?
Ooh, Bob, help me out with that.
It's already.
Travel time.
Travel time from here to Camp Murray. Or actually, Commissioner Fernhoff, you might know as well.
Yeah, if you want to make sure.
Right, no, I'm just thinking if you're supposed to be there by two o'clock, then that means we would leave here by what?
That's about a good time. But, yeah, noon, eleven thirty maybe, and then. The joint field office. We. I would say more than likely based on the, the Friday is a pretty full day. So I wouldn't say that we would be able to scoot out of there and, um. Do a tour. We would probably have to do both of those on the sixteen.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
Uh, no, it's, it's, it hasn't been. They're not at, uh, um, you know, Condition Charlie or anything that yet, right? Um, the expectation is that if you do go to Camp Murray, you have to have, uh, you know, be in a vehicle that's currently registered, have your photo ID available. Uh, current driver's license, that kind of thing. If you have official ID of any kind, uh, they appreciate that because that sort of. Elevates you into status, but essentially the value of this is that you would be seeing the facilities operation at Camp Murray. That directs any sort of emergency for the state at the state level. Uh, it's impressive from the point of view that if you've been to EM, or yeah, EMD here locally, it's a room like this, lots of chairs. But when you go to the state level, it's three large motion picture screens. That they put data up on, they use a pod system for organization and also the twenty-four seven alert warning, uh, center is there. That's where you have at least two or three, uh, watch officers that are on twenty-four seven. And so one of the questions I would have or place into your minds, if you're looking for the future. Um, it's, it's customary for a small fire department within a county to have a dialogue with the county and then the county has a dialogue with state. But it occurred to me the other day that the RFA is growing in jurisdictions to a point. Where someday you may have to have a dialogue directly with the state, which kind of bypasses the county just. From a mechanical or situational awareness, uh, type of point of view. So I would encourage you to meet your counterparts at the state. Learn what they're up to. They can learn what we're up to because it's possible in two or three years' time. That, um, our, our lanes will intersect, uh, just because of the, the size of the organization, so. And the joint field office, which is a FEMA office, is something that's only stood up when there's an active disaster. Right now, the state of Washington has an active presidentially declared disaster for the straight line windstorms and so forth that occurred, uh, back in. Uh, January, and it's an opportunity once again to reach across the aisle, FEMA Region Ten. Uh, their, uh, what they call Incident Management Assistant Team, which has been activated and get to know what the federal side of the, the fence. Uh, has to offer and, and, and at some point, I hope maybe to get everybody a tour of the two twenty eighth facility, which is the nuclear bomb site. Uh, fallout shelter that I worked in for eleven years, so it'd be kind of cool for you to go back in history.
Thank you.
So we potentially could have a full two days.
If we leave here eleven thirty on Thursday and then we, the Friday, then we would have there in Olympia, so, okay, that's all I was curious about.
Any other commissioners? Is anybody looking to take both days off of work? Nope, okay. We will continue the discussion. Uh, Melissa, when do you need to know by?
Well, the. Attendees to the Fire Commissioners Association Legislative Day can be given to me ahead of time. And then we can have another follow-up conversation about. The tour and the additional day. So. I guess maybe by the next meeting.
Okay.
We could make a decision.
Sure. Uh, so are we looking to caravan down there? Cause I don't think the RFA has a. Sound bus for us all to try and pile into.
We actually do have a. We have a van.
Oh, okay.
A pretty good sized one that can fit everybody.
Comfortably at least seven, no problem. Easily seven. Comfortably seven, easy, so.
So that means all of us could go. Seven, does that include the driver or is that?
No, driver, uh, plus, plus driver, so.
Oh, okay.
Staff, just so Commissioner know, staff is willing to, uh, go down too for these two, two days, so at least three of us, so. We'll have some ability to get people down there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will table this, uh, final discussion to the next meeting coming up here. Very, our first stated. All right, on to committee updates, bylaws with Commissioner Roland. Micah, you with us? All right, I believe he's busy, so the other commissioner on that committee is Commissioner Kenny.
Uh, yes, so we met, uh, last Monday actually and, uh, making progress on the bylaws, but.
Your mic on?
It is.
Okay, I, I couldn't see the red, so I just wanted to make sure.
But I can see through it. Um, so, uh, making progress, but it's, uh, it's, it's slow but steady.
Okay.
And we have another meeting scheduled, um, in a couple of weeks.
Okay, when are you looking to bring a rough draft before the board?
I would say at the earliest, so we'd have the one more meeting, we'd need one more meeting after that, which. Realistically is three to four weeks down the road, so that gets us to. Mid-March, um. Well, probably comfortably first part of April would probably be the earliest and it could be a little later than that. But the intention would be to bring the consultant with us with, to the board, make a presentation about, um. The bylaws, because there are significant changes in the form of it and, um, so anyways. But that's probably the earliest and maybe a little bit of wishful thinking, so it could be a little later than.
Okay, thank you. Uh, would it be possible to, for me to see a rough draft of those bylaws?
We don't have the rough draft yet, so we're still, but, but we'll wonder when we get there. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Intergovernmental with Commissioner Farinoff.
President of the California, I don't have an actual bullet point presentation for you, but, um.
Your mic. It's on.
Yeah, I see the red.
I see the red too.
See the red, okay, um. Did you have anything that you wanted to add from our discussions? Cause I don't have any bullet points to discuss.
Uh, only that, uh, we're still moving forward with Mount Lake Terrace and Breyer. We're looking forward to that and, um. Is there anything? So you're going to bring forward a new resolution here at the, on the, uh. February fourteenth meeting. Chief Eastman?
So there'll be a resolution to adopt the amended plan from Mount Lake Terrace, that'll come. Is that, is it the fourteenth? I'm, I'm all screwed up on dates, um.
Valentine's Day.
Yep, so you'll get that and then, and then the, um, interlocal agreement. Or sorry, the pre-annexation agreement with, which, um, is a motion to pass historically, so we've done it. Um, I would like to say that Breyer has passed all the documents, they approved the, they passed a resolution, um, approving the amended plan. So all the documents have formally been approved by both, um, governing boards, um, and I believe. I believe their intention is to have a resolution, um, at the meeting on the fourteenth of their council meeting on the fourteenth to put it to ballot. And they're currently on track. Um, Leslie has been working diligently with, um, with, um, Paula, the, um. The clerk. I mean, she's equivalent to their city manager, I guess I'll say that clerk, clerk doesn't actually identify what she really does. Um, the mayor, Liz Loomis, and they're working on free glass questions and all those other components that go along with it, um. And that's, that work has just begun for Leslie and, and the rest of. The city staff to go and, and start doing that, um, making sure that the factual information is out there for folks, um. I'm hoping to have that meeting here, um, in the very near future, where City of Mount Lake Terrace should start doing the same because the messaging is a little bit different, right? Um, the city of, of Breyer, um, has made and has, their intention is not to give any funds back as a result of where they are in their city and what they need for finances. Um, and the city of Mount Lake Terrace is in a very different position and so, um, I think we're in a really good place for, for both of them. Um, and, and Leslie does phenomenal work in the messaging, though it's different, I think there's a good story to be told in both. In both cities behalf and our relationship with them, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Roland, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, sorry about that. I was having trouble getting unmuted earlier, um. Two things I wanted to.
Two things I wanted to bring kind of up to the board real quick in regards to the bylaws committee that uh just so we can get some clarification and um. Uh, first thing is kind of the original plan was that we would be uh. Using the uh parliamentarian uh resource as a kind of a start or kind of a bookend uh format where. Get us kind of aligned, make sure that we knew what we were doing and then after we got that draft. Review it and. Come board. Um, he's been present at every meeting that we've had so far, um, which granted is not a a large amount, but I wanted to make sure that the board was aware of it and that.
You're cut out on us, Commissioner Ron.
The original, let's get them in at the end. At what point? I'm sorry.
Uh, just that when you were bringing forth the fact that the parliamentarian has been at each of the meetings thus far.
Oh. Yes, so so really uh just want to understand if the board is uh okay with him continuing to uh attend and bill for that time or if uh they the. Original expectation. For him to be just uh kind of the bu- the bookend um uh should be stuck to. Uh, I don't think, I don't know how many meetings we have left. Um, uh. You know, there's a cost associated with it and it didn't quite meet to the expectations that we originally set, so I wanted to make sure that you guys were aware and and.
Do we need to uh craft a new resolution around uh? I don't remember what the original. Agreement was with the parliamentarian. So do we need to make in the addition or revise that uh agreement?
I I'm not sure. I know there was a cap on the on the amount. Um, I'm not sure what he's billed so far. Um, I don't think it's hit that amount yet, but I I don't have the numbers right in front of me.
Okay, um, let's circle back to this at the next meeting. To find out what that cap is and whether or not it's been breached.
Gotcha. Um. Sorry.
Was there anything else?
Uh, yes, the um I wanted to also bring forward kind of an interesting idea that uh I read um just to see kind of what the board thought about it because I I know that. We could all use another meeting like we could use a a hole in the head sometimes, but um uh. Perhaps Commissioner Kenny, you can kind of go through the the idea that you had in there about the agenda planning.
Uh, I'm 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 not sure what you're referring to. Up for agenda planning?
Yeah, um. I don't have the text in front of me. Let's do this. Um, I'll I'll just table this right now. Uh, get to a point where I can actually get it and we can revisit it later if if possible. Otherwise. Um, we can just uh, you know, go over it with everybody uh at a future meeting.
I think he's talking about what he drafted in the bylaws. It's a specific section of the bylaws that he drafted regarding. But it's a section that is. Yeah.
Yeah.
I know what he's talking about, but it.
Oh, yeah, we'll we'll. We'll be talking about it for sure at future meetings.
Okay, we'll come back to that topic. Anything else?
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
All right, thanks. All right, um. With that, do we have any commissioner comments? Uh, Commissioner Roland, you still have your hand up. Was that uh by accident?
Uh, no, sorry about that. I'll take it down.
Okay. Um. Tomorrow. I plan to join Chief Hobus at the Fallen Firefighters. Memorial at the Nile Shrine Center in Malt Lake Terrace at one o'clock for Local Forty Seven, which is Seattle Fire, is that right?
Local twenty seven.
Twenty seven. Okay, thank you for the correction. So, um, otherwise. I don't have any further comments this time myself, so. At this time, we will go into executive session to review the performance of a public employee pursuant to. RCW four two dot three zero dot one one zero sub one sub G as in George. And let's go ahead and start off at thirty minutes.
Just like to thank the staff for being here and yeah, on a Monday in a special meeting, so. Thank you very much.
Potential action to follow after the executive session. The executive session has been extended for thirty minutes. The executive session has been extended for twenty minutes. The executive session has been extended for twenty minutes. The executive session has concluded and without objection, the special meeting has been adjourned.